Just there's no internet. In hand. Yeah, well, well, go on.
Do we have everyone here?
Hi, everybody.
Hi, man.
Somebody's got a dog in the background.
John Myhos here.
Hi, John.
Man here?
Are you missing anyone?
I don't see the mayor. I hear you. I hear you.
Anybody, anybody see me?
Yep, we can see you.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Can you hear me, Jared? Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit the record button on my, on my end, mayor.
Okay, and I think everyone's here, right, Jared?
Is that?
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, great. All right. We might as well jump in as if everyone's ready, we're gonna start. Um.
Is Michael Sadoway here?
Uh, is Michael?
Can you hear me? Yes, he is.
He can hear you.
Yes. Can you, you can hear me?
Okay. We can hear you, yep. Okay, uh. Good evening, uh, and this is, uh, to the school committee meeting on Thursday, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty. As a preliminary matter, will confirm attendance. Nan, would you please confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and, and can hear us? So if, uh, I can, I can start, Nan, if you'd like, members, when I call your name, you can respond and Nan can, uh, take the roll call. Uh, member, member, uh, Castellanos?
Present.
Yep, excuse me, member Gates?
Present.
Member Nicholson?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Ford?
Present.
Member Sadoway?
Present.
And, uh, Mimigee, present. And, uh, and I'd also like to go through the staff, Nan, I don't know if you have this, so I will go through it as well. Uh. I'm gonna go through the staff, uh, Dr. Tutwiler.
Present.
Uh, Deputy Ruggiero?
Present.
Attorney Myhos?
Present.
Deputy Powers?
Present.
Kevin McHugh?
Present.
School Committee Secretary Mary Jewels?
Present.
Thank you all. Again, this is Mayor Tom McGee, and I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us. This open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty-twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend, to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a public accessible pu- physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the city website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment for this meeting. The Lynn School Department is convening by telephone conference video conference via the GoToMeeting platform as posted on the city's website. Uh, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by vi- video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that the other people may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be, uh, captured by the recording. Uh, meeting business ground rules, we are now turning to the first agenda item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct for our business and to ensure accurate meeting, meeting minutes. As the chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda, and they, after they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone, mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that help generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be con- conducted by a roll call. Uh, with that, um, we'll get on to the agenda. And I don't know if there's a flag visible, is there a flag visible? I have actually a flag behind me. Is there a flag visible? I have a flag behind me as well that I have, uh, that I will also, uh, I see both flags here, so I'd ask everyone to stand and salute the flag together, and then I'd ask that you, uh, stay, uh, standing, uh, for a moment of silence, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
States of America.
and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty justice for all. Thank you. And I would like you to stand, uh, uh, for a moment of silence for William Paradas, a retired teacher who passed away on April eighteenth, twenty-twenty. Thank you. We have a number of new business on the agenda, and so we will go to that. Um. We'll go to that first, uh, hold on one second. First on the agenda is the du- dual language, dual language curriculum, uh, Dr. Tutwiler. You ready for, uh?
Thank you, mayor, uh, uh, joined by Rania Caldwell, the Director of the English Learner Education, uh, Department, and also, I believe, uh, Amanda Campbell, the Assistant Director of the English Language, uh, English Learner Education Department is also, uh, on the line. Uh, just planning to, I think originally this, uh, update was planned for, uh, Thursday, the thirteenth, uh, the, the twelfth, rather, uh, we canceled that meeting. Uh, over the last couple of meetings, there've been questions about the extent to which we've been able to proceed with planning on programs and, uh, you know, parts of our, um, a strategic plan going forward. Uh, this is one among a number of places where that is happening in earnest. So I'm gonna turn it over, uh, to Rania Caldwell, who I believe has a PowerPoint that Jared will, uh, present.
Great.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Um, could I just confirm that people can hear me clearly?
We can, we can hear you, can everyone hear? And I think we can see the, uh, uh, the slides as well.
Perfect, perfect.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. First of all, thank you for, um, having us here tonight. We know it's a, it's a hectic time all around, um, but as Dr. Tutwiler said, um, we are working earnestly on launching our dual language program in the fall. Um, as you know, um, if we could go to the next slide, please. Um, our Compañeros program in, at Harrington School is set to open in fall twenty-twenty, and we've been in the planning phase since, uh, last year, and we um, are pretty true to our timeline in terms of all the preparation that we've done for a smooth opening. Um, obviously with the closure, um, we need to make some adjustments, but we feel confident in what those adjustments look like, uh, moving forward. Uh, next slide, please. Um, we wanted to show you, um, this banner in person, but, um, the pictures still, um, do it justice. We, uh, purchased, um, Compañeros Harrington banners to have in our parent information center when families walked in to, um, open up that dialogue around what is, um, what is dual language and what is the program. All pick staff were trained, um, and received resources to give to families. Um, we had banners in the waiting room and in parent information center, and there's also one at Harrington School.
We may have, uh, a little bit, we've lost, uh.
That's okay, I can pick up where she left off, this is Amanda. Can everyone hear me?
You should jump in, she, I'm sure she'll, she'll be back.
Um, so we had two banners hanging at the parent information center as well as one at Harrington, um, and we're really excited about this, um, ability to kind of show everybody what the program is and give them some more information to keep it on the forefront of everyone's minds. Uh, next slide. Thank you. Um, again, just a reminder, these are our three pillars of dual language. We have bilingualism and bilinguism, academic achievement, and sociocultural competence. And our goal, as we began looking for, um, our curricular resources, was to make sure that each one of the three pillars was equally represented. Uh, we knew that for bilingualism and bilinguism, we needed a program that, or a resource that really emphasized how Spanish literacy is developed, not necessarily English literacy translated into Spanish. And we also knew that for sociocultural competence, we wanted our students to be able to engage in, um, conversations that would allow them to talk about, um, what things are like around the world, not just, um, within their own context. Um, so, next slide.
Thanks, Amanda. I don't know what happened.
Rain, Raina has joined us back, so Amanda jumped right in and filled in.
Sorry, I know, she's, she's really good at that. Um, so picking up, um, we reviewed some of this process the last time we chatted a few months ago, in that our curriculum and assessment selection process included, uh, members from Lynn and Salem. We're still working very collaboratively from that work that happened with the grant we received last year. We previewed some resources and then narrowed down that list. Um, we developed some essential criteria and look fours to, um, look at curriculum and assessments, uh, for potential candidates. And then we evaluated those, uh, resources with the pros and the cons, as Amanda mentioned, along those three pillars of dual language, to make sure that they were the best match for the program. Um, once we did that, we determined next steps, um, to resolve any gaps, because what we found with the lens of those three pillars is that, um, resources may have had strengths in some of those pillars, but not in others, and we brought those representatives back to the group to ask them very specific questions regarding an aspect of those three pillars, so that we could have some clarity around that product or that resource to make sure it was a good fit. Um, and then team members, um, on those committees included representatives from Salem and Lynn, but in Lynn specifically, uh, members included administrators and teachers from Harrington, um, ELE staff, uh, curriculum department in the core content areas, special education staff, um, as well as, um, uh, people who had experience with Spanish literacy. Because we will be a ninety-ten, uh, Spanish program, um, we wanted to make sure that that Spanish literacy was authentic in the resources we were selecting. Uh, next slide, please. So some of the potential resources we discussed at our last meeting, and we, um, evaluated these resources with the curriculum team, and the recommendation they, um, are putting forth, if we can go to the next slide, is Eureka Math by Great Mad, uh, Great Minds. And, um, Eureka Math, this is a snapshot from, um, Ed Reports, which, um, kind of scores, um, resources um, in terms of usability, alignment, rigor, and things of that nature. Um, and overall, the team felt that Eureka Math had a good pacing, had good resources available, was very much standards-aligned, and, um, had opportunities for diverse learners. Um, next slide, please. As you can see here, um, the rating system on, um, Ed Reports goes, um, green, which is really strong, then yellow, and then red. Um, for, um, you can see K to five here, um, it scores all green in terms of focus and coherence, rigor, and mathematical practices, which is how kids think about math, as well as the usability rating. Um, Eureka Math is a translation of, um, Eureka Math in English. Um, but the, when looking at it, we felt that the translation, because of the academic language in, in mathematics, that the translation, um, stayed true and that it, it, it was still authentic. Um, what teachers really liked about Eureka Math is that the resources, the assessments are all available in Word documents. When, um, thinking about that sociocultural piece, teachers felt that that gave them an opportunity to make adaptations, um, to address sociocultural competence. So for example, they could adjust, uh, places in a word problem to represent places that students are from, or places in the community. They could swap names out, um, for members of their classroom or teachers at, at their school. So it allowed some flexibility to, um, still honor some of that sociocultural piece while maintaining the rigor of the math. Um, uh, are there any questions around the math before I move on to, or should I wait till the end?
I think, uh, wait till the end, unless someone has a pointed question, I think we'll wait till the end.
Okay, all right, next slide, please. Um, in terms of literacy, these are some potential resources that, um, we also, uh, looked at, and then, um, brought in some, um, vendors to come back and visit us again. Um, and one thing about literacy that's important to note in dual language is that it, it, everything's done thematically, so when we're thinking about literacy, we're thinking about Spanish language arts, we're thinking about social studies, science, as well as social justice, kind of meshing together, um, in these comprehensive units, which we'll talk about in a little while. Um, and one thing that we were particularly careful of when choosing literacy, next slide, please, is that we wanted to ensure that in the resources that we selected, that the children in those classrooms had mirrors, windows, and sliding doors, um, in those resources, which means that we wanted the resources to provide students with mirrors of themselves and their own experiences, um, windows, so that they can compare their own experiences and worlds to those of others, because that's really what sociocultural competence is. Um, and then sliding glass doors, allowing our resources to take our kids places that they may not have yet experienced before. And at a glance, that sounds like, of course, that's what we want to do, right? That's what we want our kids to have in their resources. Next slide, please. But what we found in meeting with vendors and with the research is that that's not often what kids see in books for children. Um, and this is an infographic, um, from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and what it clearly shows is that children's books are not as diverse as we think that they are, um, and that many times our kids are seeing more images of animals than they are seeing of people who have experiences or backgrounds such as their own. So, um, a quote we put on the bottom there was, "When children cannot find themselves reflected in the books they read, or when the images they see are distorted, negative, or laughable, they learn a powerful lesson about how they are devalued in society of which they are a part of." And in those conversations around sociocultural competence, we knew we needed resources that provided kids with windows, mirrors, and doors for all kids, um, so that they can see themselves, they can see others, and they can compare and know that people in this world are different and experience different things, but that we all learn from each other and we all have value in society. Next slide, please. So with that, um, our recommendation for literacy, um, is standards-based units, and that simply means we couldn't find a resource that did all of those three pillars and addressed that sociocultural competence adequately enough that, that we felt that we could take something off the shelf. So the recommendation of the committee was that, um, we would have different resources for phonics, um, and Amanda's gonna go in these in much more detail. Um, literacy, but in terms of so, uh, Spanish language arts, social studies, and science, there would be a combination of books from American Reading Company and Vista Santiana, um, that a combination of those two would address social studies, science, Spanish language arts, as well as provide students those windows, mirrors, and doors, and make sure that we address the rigor that is at the level of the standards. So I'm gonna pass it off to Amanda, she's gonna give you a virtual demonstration of what, um, these resources are, because we're not with each other for us to give you the actual text for you to flip through. Um, so I'm gonna hand it over to Amanda.
Thanks, Rania.
Great, thank you.
So, um, as Rania mentioned, ideally, we'd be giving you the opportunity to flip through, uh, different texts and things like that, um, but unfortunately, we're not in person, so we've done our best to create a bit of a virtual demonstration for you. Um, so if you could please go to the next slide. Um, so this is our phonics recommendation. Our team has recommended La Cartilla by Vista Santiana. La Cartilla is a very well-known resource for teaching phonics in Spanish. It's specifically built on features unique to Spanish rather than how we teach phonics in English. In our last presentation, we discussed how Spanish is a very transparent language that's extremely easy to learn and read in, as each of the letters makes one sound all of the time. Therefore, phonics is a much smaller piece of a literacy block in Spanish than it is in an English literacy block. Um, so this will actually only comprise about fifteen to twenty minutes of each day for students as they learn to read in Spanish. Um, and obviously phonics and phonemic awareness will also be incorporated into reading comprehension, but there will be a standalone phonics block, just like other, um, classrooms have. Um, and on our next slide, I will show you, um, our recommendation for the literacy assessment. Um, the team has also recommended the ANEEL for our literacy assessment in Spanish. The ANEEL stands for the Evaluación de Nivel Independiente de Lectura, or in English, the Independent Reading Level Assessment. Just like the phonics resource, um, this is also designed really with Spanish literacy in mind, um, and will assess students in the development of Spanish literacy, not a translation of English literacy development. Uh, this assessment assesses all the main areas of literacy, including phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. Uh, and then on the next slide, I'll go through a little bit more information about our thematic units. As Rania mentioned, instead of purchasing an off-the-shelf resource for the larger portion of our Spanish language arts block, we're recommending that we create thematic units that will build reading comprehension as well as science and social studies content knowledge. Each thematic unit will contain literacy standards, so reading comprehension and writing. They'll also contain content standards for both science or social studies. Some units will have both science and social studies bundled together. They'll also have social justice standards, uh, scaffolds for different language proficiencies, and assessments that are really designed to demonstrate students' content knowledge, regardless of their language proficiency or their literacy level. So we're going to show you an example of one thematic unit on the next slide. Um, we have a team of LPS and Salem Public School teachers that have been working really hard to start exploring the kindergarten standards and bundling them together, um, and so this unit is one of my favorites. Um, it takes the science standards of weather and the social study standards for mapping, and it actually puts them together in one unit, um, so that kids are learning about weather while they talk about places around the world. It then layers in reading comprehension standards and writing, so students will be able to write about weather and maps and compare and contrast weather in two different places, such as where they may have family or where they may have lived in the past and where they live now. Uh, lastly, it has the social justice standards, which build a foundation for the understanding that people live different lives and, and that experiences can be the same and they can be different and that that's okay. Um, so it's a really powerful opportunity for kids to learn all of these different things within the context of one another, rather than within isolation or sprinkled throughout the year. And then, on the next slide, please. Um, these are some examples of texts that we would be purchasing for both science and social studies. Um, I really wish we were able to kind of show you how it would go together, but you can see on the left-hand side, we have our science texts, which include both fiction and nonfiction, and social studies as well, which again also contain fiction and nonfiction. These texts would be used to teach not just reading comprehension, but also the content of science and social studies. Um, and to echo Rania's point, um, these text sets are one of the greatest strengths of our thematic units, because it allows us to select texts that will really connect with our students, their lives, their backgrounds, and no commercial program can ever do that. And we're really excited about this opportunity to be able to use authentic texts from around the Spanish-speaking world to provide those windows, mirrors, and doors that Rania spoke about earlier. Um, and then on our next slide, we have some samples of some next steps. Um, so our next step, some of which are already underway, um, determining priority standards for each content area and developing a year-long scope and sequence that needs to be done regardless of a resource purchased, and that's something that our hard-working team of teachers is already, uh, taking on. We also plan to create curriculum maps with unit plans and weekly overviews, incorporating those linguistic scaffolds for all content areas, so that, um, language proficiency isn't a barrier for accessing content knowledge. Um, and then again, ensuring that students all have culturally relevant and authentic, uh, windows, mirrors, and sliding doors across all content areas, so really building in all three pillars within our content maps. So that is it for the thematic units. Um, on the next slide, we just have a little bit of information for you guys. Uh, we had been planning on inviting you to our next dual language community night, but instead, we're inviting you to follow us on Facebook. Um, you can find us at www.facebook.com/compañerosharrington, um, and we're currently using it to share information about dual language programs, uh, what it looks like around the state, some of the benefits, and eventually some information about our program itself. Um, so that's it from my end. I don't know if Rania has anything else she wants to add, otherwise, I think we're good.
Yep, I think, um, we can answer any questions if people have them.
Great, uh, raise your hands, and I can see you, uh, Brian, uh, member Castellanos?
Oh, yeah, it's so, uh, it's so refreshing to see that, that we're still in, um, we're moving in phases. Uh, thank you so much for the presentation. Uh, it was very, it's, it's motivating, um, especially to, you know, what we're going through now. Um, I, 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 I have a quick question about, um, implementation, so I, I know you stated that you were, you know, confident with the adjustments that we need to make, but how does that look? Like, how do we address the learning gaps caused by COVID-nineteen? How would that impact implementation for our twenty-twenty fall, uh, plan rollout?
Well, I guess I, I mean, my initial, my, I mean, my feeling is, I mean, we're dealing, we're talking about kindergartners coming in, and, um, you know, we know our kindergartners are coming in every year with a range of experiences in, in preschool or, or early learning, um, and you know, I, I think the, because I, I feel confident that our curriculum maps and our assessment processes are actually acknowledging some of those gaps and, and making those scaffolds available for kids within the planning.
Well, thank you.
Um, additionally, in terms of sorry, in terms of the implementation, um, we've been really fortunate that Boston College has been providing our, um, professional development to teachers entirely virtually already, so that has been able to move forward as scheduled. We have uh, many more teachers taking classes, um, currently, as well as more scheduled to take some in the fall, and, uh, many other partners of ours have pivoted and started to provide things remotely as well, so in terms of the teacher preparation side, things are very much moving forward as planned, although a bit differently than we originally planned.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you, uh, thanks so much for this update, very exciting, uh. I think it's gonna be terrific program, but my question was, what kind of reaction are you getting as you're looking to engage, uh, families to, to enroll? What's been the feedback so far?
Um, so in the first community night that we held, we had a great response, um, uh, you know, parents were excited. I believe, Amanda, we had fourteen or fif- thirteen or fourteen original applications or requests for enrollment, um, and we were really excited to jump into the registration phase. Um, unfortunately, that stopped about two weeks after registration began, so, um, the face, the launching of So um the face, the launching of the Facebook page is really um a first step in us trying to reconnect um with our community providers. Um, as well as reaching out to early childhood providers to be more targeted with our outreach.
Member Gately, and then Member Sadoway.
Well, Rania, first of all, I want to thank you for this uh presentation. It seems like you did a lot of work. Um, Amanda, you two worked really hard on this and the committee. Um, seems like, it looks like it's ready to start out in September. And um we'll see how it goes that once you start it. Keep my fingers crossed that the results will be what we want. Thank you for this presentation.
Thank you. Uh, Member Sadoway?
Thank you, um, Mayor McGee. I just have a question with regards to uh the staffing of the program. Um, I'm wondering, uh, has there been hindrance because of the the closure? And then I I hear you talking about reconnecting with the community. Um, and in the uh, the early childhood centers and and whatnot, but a lot of them are closed still. Um, but because of the COVID, so what type of difficulties are you facing uh there? Um, I I enjoy the curriculum that you've presented to us. I I I I like that um you've done your diligence. I like that um, uh, it's it's well-rounded and it goes uh in-depth on multiple uh areas and the weather uh example was was pretty sweet, but I just want to make sure that w- w- we have the the right staff and that we uh, we're actually able to to connect with these community organizations.
Yeah, um, so in terms of the staffing, we've actually um already secured our two dual-language kindergarten teachers. And they're actually uh working with us in the in the mapping process and in all the professional development that we're offering, so we're really excited to have those positions already secured. Um, in terms of the outreach to community partners, um, we were fortunate that we've we've worked a lot with um um, our contact, working with those early childhood providers earlier this year. So uh, they're not in their centers, but they are um available via email. And we've already identified who the students are in the Harrington District, so we're trying to be explicit about reaching out to those families, even while they're at home, to talk to them about the language programming.
Great.
We've also used um email to send out um instead of our our brochures that we gave out to you last time. We've reformatted into a single-page sheet that's easier for families to look at electronically rather than the trifold as it appears on the PDF. Um, and although we don't necessarily have access to um incoming students before they register, our um early childcare providers do have access to families and information and have been really great about offering to pass information along um and things like that, so that's been really helpful.
It's it's great to hear that because that's one of the things that I I talked about years ago when I first um uh wanted to to join uh the school committee. And I spoke to Kathy and 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 the administration about it was uh getting information from these early childhood centers because it can be very vital. It it it's very helpful. If you think about it, you know, you want to know the students that we're getting. So the with the transition period and whatnot, that's that's important to have the information. So I'm glad that you guys have have at least taken the initial step uh to to at least start uh that those relationships. Because the, you have to build those relationships somewhere, and I'm happy that we're we're planning this now because that's that's important. Thank you, Rania and Amanda.
Yeah, and to build on that, oh, sorry. I was gonna say to build on that.
I I see the uh Superintendent Regira.
Let Rania finish your statement.
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna say what what's great, when we reached out to those early childhood providers, um, they were all so interested in dual-language. And um, we had identified who those students are. Um, we gave those early childhood providers um a list of addresses that are in the Harrington District. And they were able to, um, because they know their families, identify who those families are and help us make those connections with those families. So we're building on that previous um relationship with those partners.
Perfect.
I just, I just wanted to also bring to your attention that, uh, first of all, that Amanda and Rania and these team, this team of teachers and educators who have been working on this have been doing a ton of work and have done a very good job. They also have a team that's currently working on developing um, that we're in the mid-middle of trying to port through other report cards and trying to merge them to meet what our needs are in public schools, uh, that we will be presenting at a later date once that has been done.
Thank you.
Mayor, um, here, am I able to ask a few questions?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was just gonna mention, I don't see you on my screen, so I I uh.
No, my screen went down, but my, I still have it on the phone, so.
Okay, great. Come on, go ahead, uh, Member Capola.
Okay, um, first of all, um, when you're talking about the outreach, have have we stopped if, um, have we stopped having kindergarten to sign up? Is it at a total standstill or are they still allowed to sign up?
Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Um, it it's at a total standstill right now. Um, you know, we couldn't, uh, at least in the initial phases of the closure, um, with the way that we register families, come up with a way to do so safely. Um, I've been in contact with the uh Director of the Parent Information Center. Uh, and we're close um to establishing an online pl- platform. Now, given the the fact that the, you know, the closure is extending to the end of the school year, um, it's our plan to get that system up and going as quickly as possible so we can resume those uh registrations uh and and start getting families ready for the fall.
Okay, and to fill the program with fifty students, is there any way that uh letters can be sent out to the families that have already enrolled for kindergarten to see if any, you know, it maybe they didn't realize we had that first uh presentation? And maybe they would be interested.
Yeah, uh, absolutely. Um, during um, in our planning process, we um, we identified all of the currently enrolled pre-K students who'll be entering kindergarten next year and have um personally contacted all of those families to talk to them about dual-language. Um, so we are, we do know who they are and we have been in contact with them.
Okay, and what happens if we are still, um?
Member Capola, uh, could you, I think Amanda wanted to respond to that as well.
Oh, sorry, our question, I just had an additional piece about Harrington registration.
Uh, go ahead, Amanda, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Member Capola, that's.
Okay, let me just give you the rest of my questions and maybe you want to answer them at all at one time. But what happens if we're still, um, you know, down in September and and will it be done online? As we're doing now with um students? And the other question is, um, when, I I know you told us the date, but when when is the date that uh pa- families will be notified that they are part of this program?
Dr. Tuttwiler, did you want to speak to that and then Amanda?
Uh, I'll let um, uh, Rania or Amanda answer that part, then I can speak to the September scenario.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Um, so we've also been in contact with all families that are registered for Harrington but have not expressed interest in the dual-language program. Um, that's part of our our follow-up outreach, just to see if there are any questions that can be answered. The majority of families who have already registered for Harrington have signed up for the dual-language program. Um, but we'll be following up once registration begins. Again, we'll obviously be following up. Um, if the seats are not filled, I believe, was that the question? What would happen if the seats are not filled? Yeah, um, if the seats are not filled, um, lotteries, um, that will take place at the, right now, they're scheduled to take place at the end of July, the end of June and the end of August to give us benchmarks so that we can see and adjust our marketing as needed. Um, and as of right now, it seems like we're really on pace to make sure that we'll have um the right bounds to make the program really successful.
Dr. Tuttwiler?
Uh, yes, just quickly, um, uh, related to the concern about, uh, what if uh, we're in the same situation now, um, we're in the same situation in September as we are now. Um, that is something that is absolutely possible, uh, and something that we've begun having conversations about. It's too early um to, you know, give a definitive plan to that, for that, uh, because I I we need to wait for guidance around, you know, are there, you know, school, is is a scenario, is it a scenario where school can be open? But only, you know, certain numbers of students can attend it at a at a given time? Or what are the rules around uh physical or social distancing while school's in session? Or what are the rules around uh the length of a day? I mean, all of those things, we would need guidance on in order to make a plan, but rest assured, fully aware that that is a possibility, uh, and and starting to build a framework to be ready to respond when that guidance is released.
That that follow-up your questions, Member Capola?
Thank, thank you, yeah.
You're welcome. Other questions? Uh, thank you, uh, Ran- Rania and Am- Amanda. Uh, great presentation. Thanks for your input and uh, um, I know it was a good discussion and we'll keep, we'll we'll assure to follow from here, but thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Bye, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Rania. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is mo- the remote learning plan updates. Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler, would you like to uh speak to that?
Yeah, certainly, certainly. Um, I'd just like to give uh the community, uh, all who are able to see this, as well as the committee, uh, an update on our plans as it relates to learning. Uh, just by way of reminder, um, we're sort, we're seeing this uh in in phases. Uh, our Phase One approach was really, um, th- that endeavor was really around firmly establishing resources and services to support the well-being of all students first and foremost. Uh, we asked teachers to develop content that would suffice for approximately four weeks. Uh, with the extent of the transition now to the end of the year, we've uh pivoted to what we believe is a thoughtful approach for academic engagement. Uh, essentially from Monday until uh June eighteenth. Uh, I shared a sample of um, of this plan with the school committee that representing the activities for uh grades three through five. Um, but let me just sort of uh talk you through uh at a high level what what this is about, and I'm happy to respond to your questions. Um, what is in the next phase of our remote learning plan? Uh, our interdisciplinary projects and activities anchored in common themes district-wide. Uh, they're broken into grade spans, pre-K, K, one, two, three to five, six to eight and nine to twelve. Uh, the work in the uh next phase of the remote learning plan uh features the themes of community, adaptation and reflection. Uh, they are available, as you saw in what you received, uh, to families in English and Spanish. And additionally, the posted version online will be available to be translated into uh hundreds of additional languages. Um, the first theme on community is complete and will span uh the next three weeks. Uh, the plan as a whole features accessibility and or modified components, allowing all students to engage. As I hope you saw, uh, it includes a menu of options with a recommended daily schedule for students. Uh, it incorporates physical activity and activities related to the arts. Uh, and I think uh equally important, uh, it aligns with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Guidance for Remote Learning, which at this point calls for a deeper dive on standards already taught uh and for students to be engaged uh with learning for approximately one half of a a typical school day. Uh, I purposely said uh guidance on remote learning for now uh because I understand there's gonna be an update to that guidance, uh, if not tomorrow or next week. Uh, we feel um particularly prepared for that next step in guidance because we're in the process of um developing the second uh theme of the remote learning plan around adaptations, and so we'll be able to accommodate likely uh that the new guidance in that work. Um, embracing the district core value of inclusiveness, all students will be able to access Phase Two materials. Students do not need to have access to technology or the internet to engage with all Phase Two learning activities. Further, um, the uh instructions and much of the material has been translated uh to Spanish for ease of access. The work will be available for families in paper form as well as online, and I'll say a bit about the the paper availability in just a second. Uh, in total, uh, I think I've said this before, I think this universalized approach will be much less burdensome on families and students. Uh, it will also make support and feedback from teachers uh to students and families seamless. With respect to distribution, uh, as I mentioned, all papers will be, all materials will be available online uh in a translatable form beginning Monday. Uh, families seeking paper copies, they retrieve a packet uh at all schools next Monday to Wednesday, nine to noon. And then from Thursday, uh, April thirtieth until Friday, May eighth, uh, all, all-level packets will be available at the lunch sites from eleven to one, Monday through Friday. Uh, I'll be communicating this via all, I've already communicated to families that this was forthcoming. I've released a letter on the topic. Uh, but I will communicate about the paper availability, which again will be next week and the following week, uh, via all call, social media, and it'll be posted to the website tomorrow. Um, two quick pieces uh that I want to add. First, uh, a video is being created to serve as a tutorial on navigating the packet that will be in English and Spanish. Uh, that likely will be ready for publication tomorrow in preparation for the release next week. Uh, also, as I've said many times, uh, the displays of commitment and creativity continue to amaze me. Uh, first, I have to shout out the teams that uh created these packets. Uh, for these to come together so quickly and thoughtfully, I think it reflects the deep knowledge and skill set of the Lenin Public School staff, so shout out to them. And on the topic of dedication, it should be known that uh the Fallon team uh printed their packets appropriate for the kids at their school today and hand-delivered every last one of them to all their families, along with the campus. Uh, so that is just simply extraordinary. So I provided you the sample in advance, and I know it's a weekly document. Remember that it's supposed to span three weeks. Uh, but I uh hopefully you got a chance to bruise it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We'll invite Kim and Deb uh to join the conversation and give them full credit because they led uh those teams in creating this document, which I think is impressive.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. I know that we have been uh thinking about this out, and I really appreciate the work that you and the team have done on on getting this ready. It's gonna be really important. Um, I think it's a great idea to have different um strategies to reach students, whether it's print or um online or the video you're talking about. I'm sure this is really creative getting that that video out. Um, I know you can correspond about uh seeing LCTV or LTV to to get videos like that out there. Um, so that's great. Uh, I I, you know, I I think, I did have one piece of feedback on on the on the 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 sample that I read. Um, the, I think it's, I think the idea of doing the topics that we chose, like family and community makes a lot of sense in these in these times, um, because uh everyone's home and thinking about their family and community, and also you you want, you want kids to be able to use what they have around them, um, if they're not gonna be in school, so that that makes a ton of sense. I think it also means that the topics are are quite personal, um, and sort of in the spirit of the presentation we had previously about uh having mirrors and 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 the the district's core value of inclusiveness, I think it's 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 really important that we uh look at the kind of personal materials with that in mind. And I think there's uh, even even though this is coming together quickly. And I think there's, uh, even, even though this is coming together quickly, I think at least the, the version I saw, I thought there were a couple instances where we could do a better job of, uh, having a curriculum live up to that core value of inclusiveness in the way they were talking about families and the way they were showing, um, members. Uh, so I just wanted to share that feedback.
Feedback, well taken.
Other questions? Comments? Um, member Capola?
Did you say go on?
Member Capola?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
I'm, what I, okay, in regards to it, um, how is a, if a student get it in a paper form, how are we going to, um, interact with them? And we talked about that before, and I think this, what was gonna happen was gonna be like students were gonna be contacted like a couple of times a week. So I'm just wondering, is, uh, there a plan in place for that? For the ones that are taking it in a paper form? And have we met up to that of reaching through to the families and the students for at least twice a week?
Uh huh. So, uh-
Before you start, Dr. Tuttwiler, I wanna make sure, if you're not speaking, make sure you're muted, um, please. Go ahead, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Yeah, uh, uh, the, the answer to that question is absolutely. So, uh, this is sort of like a, 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 a two-part approach. One, uh, is providing the students with the learning materials, and two, it's providing students and their families with support and feedback and guidance from, uh, from our staff. That staff expectation document that outlines, um, a specific number of hours and specific expectations around the number of times there's supposed to be meaningful outreach, um, to students is, is a huge part of the next part of this, um, uh, phase. And so, um, I sent the school committee a, um, a copy of an email that went to all staff, um, which, uh, you know, essentially is kicking off this next phase, uh, and also uh, giving teachers access to, um, the, uh, remote learning packets that kids are gonna be getting so they can familiarize themselves with it, uh, in preparation to support students with it, uh, beginning next Monday. Uh, and then the second question, uh, was, correct me if I'm wrong, are staff members actually engaging in that meaningful contact twice per week? That's the expectation, and there's also an expectation that it's documented, uh, twice monthly, uh, principals are collecting a spreadsheet, um, where that teachers are supposed to complete, um, detailing their outreach to the students in their caseload. Uh, we're doing this in part, uh, to stay in compliance with, um, uh, special education regulations, uh, during the closure. Uh, but we thought it made sense to universalize that accountability, um, for all staff. Um, so that, you know, is, is really prudent, uh, a prudent professional approach to, uh, ensuring that there's outreach and being able to look back and say, yep, I spoke to Pat Tuttwiler and, and, and his, uh, family on this date about this, uh, particular learning strategy, or this learning challenge, or this aspect of, uh, the remote learning packet. So, um, that's the expectation, and that expectation continues. Um, are there scenarios wherein, um, individuals have not been reached? I, I'd say yes. Um, that doesn't mean there isn't a valiant effort to do so. Uh, we, we receive constant reports about, um, you know, either not having phone calls returned, or numbers that don't work. Um, I, 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 again, I applaud our staff. I think they're going above and beyond. Uh, and I acknowledge that there, um, there are, you know, instances where, um, someone may not be receiving contact. If that person reaches out to a committee member or to someone who's watching, uh, please direct them to contact their school principal or their teacher. We want to be in contact with them. We want to support them through this. We want to engage with them around their learning. Uh, and I think thus far, uh, the staff is bending over backward trying to do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, member Capola. Uh, thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. Member Ford, member Sadowite, then member Gately. I had a quick, quick question on the first part of member Capola's, um, question related to safely getting that, disseminating that information in terms of, uh, safety related to COVID nineteen and how that is gonna be disseminated. I know you worked very, working very hard to make sure the grab and go is done properly. So I just wanna either reiterate or ask the question on how we'll ensure that, uh, it's safe for the dissemination for both those that are handing it out and those that are coming to get that material.
Hmm. So, um, this is where we lean on the expertise of our principals. I mean, we had, uh, been in contact with, uh, one or two today, um, who are in their buildings working out that plan. They're uber mindful of, uh, the social distancing requirements and, you know, the fact that we're really trying to keep everyone safe, uh, during this. I mean, I, 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 we really can't know how many families are actually gonna come out to retrieve these. It is available, uh, you know, online, uh, but a plan is being hatched at each of the buildings, um, to create a scenario where families can safely access the documents. And I'll also say, um, that, you know, it's essentially one-stop shopping for, for families. For example, if I have a third grader at Shoemaker and a sixth grader at Pickering and a, and a high school student, I can go to any one of those schools and get the documents for all of my children, and then I'm done and I can go back home. Uh, so that's a piece of the planning as well.
And I think-
Meaning I could just go to Pickering and the high school, high school materials. All the materials will be at all of the schools, is my point.
Understood, and the facial covering obviously is a real important piece of that. I know you're doing that with the full distribution, and I think reiterating it to the families as well. Could be, it doesn't have to be masks, it can be, but covering mouth and, and nose is obviously a key piece of that as well. And I see Deputy Superintendent, uh, Powers is also looking to speak to that.
Go ahead, Kim.
Um, yeah, every one of the schools is developing and will put out an elaborate plan, and also in that plan, parents are gonna, going to be told there'll be, um, a separate site at each end of the school in terms of pedestrian pickup and car pickup. So we're trying to even s- spread that out. They're gonna be told that if it's pedestrian pickup, um, to keep in mind social distancing, people are expected to wear masks. We're doing this over a series of three days. But even just spreading that out, the schools are developing very elaborate plans to keep people apart.
Dr. Tuttwiler, do you wanna expand on that? Thank you. Okay, great. Member Ford, then member Sadowite and member Gately. Member Ford?
Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler, um, have you, uh, had any teachers convey to you, um, the fears and the concerns and the bewilderment of particularly the young, the young students? That, uh, you know, I know my grandkids are asking me questions like I know something, um, about the world they've been thrown into and, you know, people, what's gonna happen? And I don't know, but, you know, are we addressing the, the fears? I, I think we've got a very nervous young community now.
Correct. Uh, so I have not had that feedback directly delivered to me, and, uh, if Kim or Deb have, certainly, uh, jump in and share, but, but I, 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 I think part of the, um, part of our effort in supporting families through this is with the outreach, is yes, to have, uh, meaningful outreach with the students, but a lot of, lot of, um, our, our teachers are talking to parents. Uh, and, you know, they're asking questions about, I, I, I assume about like what's next and what's gonna happen in the schools and things of that nature. And, you know, that's where our staff, I think, is, is, is really being a support to, uh, to our families. Guiding them on things that they can do with their children to keep their minds on things that are positive, related to their learning. Uh, but, but I have not heard directly any feedback, um, from any principals, uh, on, um, you know, children expressing these sorts of things to, to teachers. I don't know if Kim or Deb have.
One of the things that was discussed at the elementary principals meeting was developing a document for their staff to be able to have talking points on people being isolated, which is gonna be, which is currently being developed by our social workers and will be dispersed to all, to all principals and to all staff. I mean, and social workers are also in contact with students across the district.
Okay, great.
Well, I had, I had read, I had read an article online about a seventeen-year-old that committed suicide because she was overwhelmed by the malignness of her future with, you know, the COVID nineteen, and I was, I was just concerned that that type of mentality might be prevalent or growing out there. That's a concern I had.
Uh, Deputy Superintendent, Reggie Arrow?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that, uh, like Fecto Leary, I've been in contact with Mara Dergan. Uh, some of our more at-risk students, uh, for exactly those issues. And, uh, they have been doing like going to the home. They've been in contact pretty much daily. Um, the, uh, Mara Dergan has been at the school at least, you know, three to four days of the week, uh, in certain hours for families to come and pick up care packages or, uh, you know, paper copies of resources of work to do. They, they are doing constant check-ins, uh, with their students, and I know as Dr. Tuttwiler shared, that, uh, Fallon School, uh, Nancy and her staff have been doing the same and are making sure that they're in contact with the families on a regular basis. These are some of our most at-risk students and families. Uh, but even as Kim said, the social workers have been working double time trying to, you know, stay in contact with the, the families that are, you know, in our schools are identified as the stu- the families who need the most support, and they have been contacting them on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Okay, member Sadowite, uh, Gately, and then member Castellanos.
Uh, just two questions here. Um, I know that, um, on the website, we, we, we mentioned that the social-emotional crisis supports are not available on-site and that we, uh, if there's any issues that families face, they need to, uh, contact the Elliot, uh, Crisis Line. I, I think that we can, uh, more with getting that out there, um, because I, I think John is right where, um, it's an unsettling and uncertain period of time for many people, and, um, especially seniors. Um, I don't want them to feel like they're alone, especially with missing out on everything with Arch de Paul, graduation, you know, college is now delayed. This is a, a, a very, very, um, unheard-of, uh, time to be, to be honest with you, and what technology it just puts in your face over and over again. So if we can do more than just put that on our website, that'd be great. Um, so, just so families know and students know that it's out there. Um, and I just wanted to, the, the, the second question I had is, um, besides the, the calls that are required twice a, a month, how much, uh, instruction is being done at this particular point in time? Uh, I feel a, a huge pushback from parents that it's not enough or it's too much. Um, I have a parent that wants to know they can opt out of, of, uh, of getting calls from teachers, um, because it's, it's too much, and I have, uh, families that say they don't hear from anybody. Um, so it, it, it's pretty interesting, and then you have, uh, parents that don't know what, what their kids are, are, are learning, uh, you know, in this material that they have. So how are they able to do any sort of instruction if, if, if they're lost in, in there as well? Um, and every time I do speak to family, I, I do tell them that it's, it's not mandatory to, to, to participate and, and to, to do the work. Uh, but that's never good enough. So, wha- wha- what do we do with that, Patrick?
Well, uh, let me respond to the first question. Um, to be clear, the, uh, the information around the Elliot, uh, Crisis Resource, um, is for just those situations, a crisis, meaning someone is in danger of hurting themselves or others. Um, for general, you know, you know, concerns, whether it's, you know, I, I feel a degree of depression around, um, you know, the substance of the situation we find ourselves. Um, there, there is immense outreach, and I think Kim and Deb just spoke to, um, y- y- you know, Fallon, uh, our social workers, our guidance counselors are also engaged in, in regular outreach, and it's not just, um, for our most, uh, fragile students. Um, it's, it's for students in their caselots. That's where those check-ins come in and, uh, sort of related to what you just shared. I know some families, I've gotten that feedback also, who are saying like, stop calling, like enough. Um, but it's, it's through that outreach that we find out how we can best tailor our supports. Uh, and so through that, through those communications, through those conversations, through that feedback, I mean, that funnels all the way back to our planning teams here and deciding what's the best, the next best, best step. So, um, you know, I, you know, wh- what I would say, uh, for a family feels like they're receiving too many calls, I think that's feedback that a teacher can hear, and we wanna be partners with families. If they're feeling like it's too much, they can say that. They can say, hey, can we limit the phone calls to, you know, Tuesdays and this, at this time, and I can give you sort of a full report and, you know, the, the student can sort of let you know how they're doing, what's working, what they're struggling with, uh, and where they need help, and, you know, that would be, that would be, uh, fine. And then the, the outreach can take the tact of another platform, which is why we've established, uh, Ed Dojo, uh, at the elementary level, Jupiter at the secondary level. There's also email. There's, uh, many teachers have taken to using Zoom. There's lots of different ways to engage that contact. It doesn't need to come in the form of a phone call. I, I tend to like that, uh, approach, and on that survey, many families indicated that that would be the best way, um, for outreach. In terms of those who've received nothing, I mean, that's feedback that we wanna hear. Uh, um, there've been a couple of cases where people have reached, uh, appreciate that and said, hey, I haven't heard anything. Come to find out that the number was wrong in the system. They'd been trying, uh, and they'd been sending emails and maybe the person hadn't checked it, but that's feedback that, um, that we wanna hear. And so whether it's reaching out to send an email directly to the principal to say, hey, not for nothing, but, um, I've not received, uh, outreach from my child's teacher, or, uh, I have questions about the work and please help us navigate through it or help me understand, um, what it is we could do differently or better with my child. Um, it's gonna take this partnership. No, we've not done this before. Nobody has. Um, this is all new for all of us, and the only way that it's gonna work is through that give and take of, uh, you know, sort of feedback and response. Um, I, I will tell you, um, that the next step in our, uh, planning, I, I believe, will be, it's, it's slightly different. I believe that will be less burdensome on families. They'll be able to have the entire packet like in their hands or available for them online to see the different activities, and there's the element of choice, so they can decide, uh, with their child what they wanna do on a particular day, or use, um, the outreach from the teacher to decide what, which activities would be best for their student based on where that student is with his learning and skills. Uh, so I'm hopeful that that will improve with the next step. Um, but, uh, people need not be bashful about giving feedback.
And, and what, what's happening with the, the no contacts? Are there other attempts made? Will it eventually lead to a letter being sent to the family just, just to see if, 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 if everything's okay?
Well, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
Where, where teachers aren't able to communicate with all of their students.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, we, we've had a conversation about this. Um, their, uh, principals are compiling a list of families that they've tried every which way, um, to reach out to, and we're at a point now where we wanna do wellness checks. Um, you know, where, uh, we wanna send, you know, in partnership with, uh, Orin Wright, just someone to say, hey, to check, hey, we've been trying to reach out and connect around the learning. They haven't been successful, is everything okay?
Kind of like the attendance initiative that we have. That's what I was trying to get to, to see if we're following certain, uh, certain steps because, okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Ga- thank you, doctor. Member, um, Gately, and then member Castellanos.
Um, Dr. Tuttwiler, when I got this, um, packet the other day, I'm glad I got a hard copy. I don't know if the parents are gonna get this huge packet 'cause I don't know if they'd be overwhelmed. I hope that the instructions are very specific. It really, it really was, it took me a little while to read through it because the questions in my head, uh, if I have a third grade, which one of these activities are third grade? Which one of these activities are fourth grade? Which one of these are fifth grade? So it has to be sort of like, you can use any one of these, and the teacher has to guide them. You gotta help, they're gonna have to get some help on this packet somehow, the parents, because they're doing their regular job. They're also trying to be sub-teachers or help the students with these activities, and even though I think they're fun activities and interesting activities and the themes are good, I don't know if the parents are really going to be able to- I don't know if the parents are really going to be able to last fit under this duress. Um that's my one question. I want to um explain to um Mr. Ford uh something that happened at St. Mary's when we found the school year was out. Um they, they already decided like some ideas of what they're going to do with seniors. So they had sent out a message to the seniors to let them know that, don't worry, there will be something for you coming forward. It might be in July or whatever. And I've already talked to Dr. Tutwiler about that. And um not reaching some people, my experience, Dr. Tutwiler, when I've been working on Zoom and working on my portal, I constantly send out emails to my students. And they got this little funny thing they learned how to do and that's to say, oh, emails from Miss Gately are junk emails. So all my emails have been going to junk. So like again, sending someone out to chat on students to see if they're well, um sort of, the parents sort of gone on board and I started getting all my work. It was great for me. Students. Um yeah, I'm really glad that you're using the Dojo. I'm really glad I'm hearing good, positive feedback on that. And Jupiter, some parents are having a hard time with Dojo. And um that's about it. If you could just answer my question about helping parents to understand this packet, that would be great.
I don't know, Deputy Superintendent Powes, did you want to speak in first? I saw you raising a hand.
Yep. Um so those packets are done in grade level spans. And on it, on it, students are directed to choose an activity and um the activities students can self-select. There's no, there's no grade level there per se. Um there are, there are, some activities are connected to certain grade levels. We also understand that in a, a pre-K, K span or a one-two span or a three-five span, that you have students that are at different levels. And so they can self-select into the activity that's best going to meet their ability and interest. So that's, it's purposely done that way. There's no right or wrong activity to choose. There's no grade level activity to choose. Students can self-select into whatever they want. And in terms of that, they're choosing one, they're directed on that to choose one ELA activity each day and one math activity. And parents are also, that's why that packet is accompanied by that schedule. And that schedule, that, that nobody has to follow that schedule. It's just a recommendation. So you see on that schedule that there's an academic time in the morning and there's an academic time in the afternoon. So they're choosing one ELA, they're choosing an ELA activity and a math activity. And students are going to self-select to what they can do and what they have an interest in.
Right, Dr. Tutwiler. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add uh this one thing about the packet length. Um one of the reasons why it's so long, it's double. Um it, it, it's like a double packet because it's in English and Spanish. And we purposely did that. We did not want to separate and have, you know, Spanish packets over here, English packets over there. We wanted it to be all one packet. So any family can grab a three to five packet or a six to eight. And whether your, you know, your home language is English or Spanish, it's all right there for you. And that video that's being created, created, which I believe will be ready tomorrow and we'll post that and I will reference it in my all calls to families. Uh we'll, we'll give them a high level, really easy uh approach to, to navigating it. It's really, you know, at, at a glance, I can see how it might appear daunting to folks, but it's really designed to be accessible. And, and I'll say for those families who uh have, you know, children at home, I would say probably your, your elementary age kids are going to need a little bit of guidance with this packet. Uh and for parents who work, I, I'm one of those people. I do have a 10-year-old at home and I'll tell you, uh in the beginning of this closure, uh my 10-year-old had a packet and it worked beautifully. The school moved to exclusively online and that called for lots of intervention and support from a parent. And both parents are working full-time, extremely challenging. The hope here is that this will be more accessible and easier for families.
Um Dr. Tutwiler, in the, in the future, like going into September, um maybe um we should be using Dojo, Dojo and Jupiter like, you know, like, you know, this is of course unprecedented, but um going through the future, we should have certain tools and things that students use weekly so that when and if this ever, God forbid, happens again, we're prepared. That's all.
Excellent point. I just, I agree 100%.
Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero.
Yeah, I just wanted to tag on to Kim and Pat um that when Kim and I met with the teams and when we've met with the principals around these remote learning packets, we have stressed that then, you know, as soon as these get released, that the next couple of weeks, the communication should be around, of the teachers to students and families should be around these packets. You know, what activities did you choose? What questions do you have about the packet? Um you know, giving feedback to students, answering questions, the, the communication for the next couple of weeks will be targeted specifically to these packets and answering uh and clarifying any questions that families have.
Thank you. Member Castellanos.
Uh so I just, a lot of questions were answered. Um I just want to make a quick comment about Jupiter. So I actually been able to have um kids from my special head I wear that I assist with Jupiter. I also tutor kids and I mentor kids that use, I, I help engage families in how to access Jupiter. And I just want to say how impressed I was with Lynn Classical High School. Uh Principal Dunn, um therefore their communication is on point. I got teachers always reaching out to these kids, always asking if they're okay. They start with the hierarchy need. How can they be met? They set, they set up real expectations, which I appreciate. Um because we're all going through such uh unprecedented times and there are so many challenges that we're all facing right now. Um and, and there was a recent um on Tuesday, Principal Dunn uh sent out a message of, you know, it was a really, it, it wasn't, you know, to promote, oh, we're going to go right into, we're going to dive deep in some, it's a, it's a, it's a curriculum. It was, okay, we're going to show that we're going to be resilient, that we're going to, you know, not forget about the seniors. We're going to have transparency. Uh Deputy Ruggiero, thank you. Because I, as you were talking, I could see that the communication with the principals at, right in front of me, it's just, it's just wonderful to hear that. Very resourceful. Uh and Deputy, excuse me, Superintendent Tutwiler, I appreciate um the, the, the feature that you have for adaptation. Um so we don't have to rely heavily on technology because I have seen an outpour of inequity where a lot of families that I'm working with not able to access those resources um by, by technology and wifi. I've been trying to feel as many different um resources for my families that I work with and also my constituents. So it's just been, it's very complicated. So I really appreciate that feature because it's very important to make sure that we get access points uh for our families um in our district. So we uh, you know, I enjoy the, the, the conversation that we, you just brought, brought to us uh through the remote learning program. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Member Nicholson.
Thank you. I just had a, a, a follow-up question. Um I think in some ways, this style of writing that we're offering the district is, you know, the, the, the self-directed, self-paced. Um there's, there's some really like uh progressive opportunities in that, right? Like in, in some ways, it's, it's, I could see, you could see it being connected to some of what we had been already working on and uh testing students for, for specific competencies and, and, and uh making sure that students who hadn't mastered those uh get the support they need before they move on to the next uh item and things like that. Um and in some of the, the programs we had uh in, in academic support. And so especially as we think about how the potential for this to last, um I think the key there is to, in addition to providing the self-directed, self-paced activities, is to uh help students understand when they have um achieved competencies and, and items and you know, this, that's a longer-term uh program. Sure, this, this, this is when, like you said, a phased approach. But what, what are, what are, have you, have you, are there any more thoughts on how to uh ways to set that up in the, in the remote environment that, that, that checking that students have gotten uh new competencies?
Yeah, so y- y- what you're describing um uh pretty much in detail is what a learning management system allows you to do. Um like Blackboard, like Google Classroom, like Canvas, like It's Learning. There's probably 25 of them, right? Um unfortunately, the Lynn Public Schools doesn't have them. Right? So what we have to resort to in a scenario like this, and I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing, uh is communication. Right? As uh Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero just described, uh at least in the early goings, like it's about part of the, the partnership with students and families uh in the early goings with the remote learning plan is like navigating it, deciding which sorts, which activities are more appropriate for that particular individual. Uh and subsequent conversations and, and in outreach, um getting feedback from the student about what he or she did, uh teacher giving feedback um you know, in response to that feedback. Um you know, what the student should continue to do, what they might want to think about doing differently or better. That, that's the kind of um sort of learning uh approach that we're taking uh with this document. But what you, what you describe um happens uh pretty seamlessly in a learning management program, uh a learning management system. Um that does require um every student to have a device uh and every household to have internet uh connectivity. And it also requires um, you know, training, staff training on that uh platform. Uh for us, again, I, 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 this is a place for us to get to. We're not, we're not there yet. Uh but given the tools that we have and the dedication and the creativity of our teachers, I think we're still well-placed to serve families well.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh next on the agenda is uh plans to accommodate life skills expansion. Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, that's me. Um so quickly, it's no secret that um the special education student population in Lynn um continues to grow and we've opened a number of classrooms uh over the years. Uh one among many programs for which that is the case is our Life Skills Program um at the high school level. Uh given the increasing life skills enrollment, the need to open, uh we have a need to open two new classrooms uh at the high school level. Uh urgent situations such as these call for creative problem solving. We think we have a creative, creative solution for one of the classrooms uh for next year. That solution comes in the form of a partnership with KIP Lynn. Ultimately, we would provide the Life Skills Teacher and a paraprofessional and would assign our students to a classroom in their building at KIP Collegiate um in the Blood Building. Uh KIP would provide an additional paraprofessional. As it happens, they have students who qualify for a Life Skills Program at the high school level, but they have no program. Uh their students would join this class. Uh conceptually, no money would. This would in essence be a quid pro quo. In exploring this idea, we've already reached out to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They are researching any potential legal obstacles, but we're particularly forthright in applauding this effort and this sort of collaborative thinking. There's no obligation of this so, of this sort in the state of Massachusetts. Uh I know that from a political standpoint, there are some challenges between district and charter schools. I acknowledge that. In this particular scenario, we, meaning Lynn Public Schools and KIP Lynn, are both committed to serving Lynn youth well. Everyone is wearing the same jersey in this scenario and it reads Lynn on the front. We have co-created a one thing which outlines a high-level idea behind this concept. Right now, this is just an idea and in my humble opinion, uh a good one. DESI has communicated, has committed to getting back to us on or before May 1st with any challenges to the proposal. One reason for the urgency of this plan is the delay on the portable classrooms at English High School. By way of information, our on-track plan has been derailed by bids that came in well over what we can afford. Part of the issue is timing. The plan is to submit another request, which was at a time when projects of this sort will be more affordable to complete. In essence, that leaves us without the additional classrooms at English High School to start the 2021 year. Simply put, we will be forced to consider outplacements to accommodate the need if we do not leverage uh creative solutions like the one I've just proposed. Tonight, the idea was to formally share the idea, answer questions that you might have, uh at least ones that I can answer at this point. And at our next meeting, I'd like to present a draft of an MOA uh and any feedback from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um I will be seeking approval to engage this approach for one school year with plans to evaluate the success of the program mid-year or thereabouts to determine whether or not to continue. Have to answer any questions you might have.
Member Nicholson and then Member um Castellanos.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, for the update and for the uh really proactive approach uh to a really important issue. Um I know we're waiting for feedback from everybody involved and we're sort of at the brainstorming stage, I guess. Um and so I'm looking forward to finding out some more answers to some of the questions that are, that are, that are been raised by this. Um one of the things in turn, in terms of an MOA, um that I would be interested in seeing, you know, in the, in the spirit of collaboration, um I think the part of the, the relationship that I would imagine being productive from the Lynn Public Schools point of view. Uh the uh prioritization of that collaboration, collaboration and, and not sort of um putting uh a scene that, that, that KIP put itself against us. So I'd be interested in seeing something, you know, MOA that would uh in which the KIP would agree not to be expanding if we're so wrong if they were collaborating with us. Um you know, I think, I, I look back at the application that they had submitted to expand last time and one of the things they said, one of the arguments they made why uh expansion made sense for them is that they would be able to get the scale they need to offer more special education services, uh which would be good. Um other things in that respect, I, once they had this.
Excuse me. Um I want to make sure everyone is breaking up. I want to make sure everyone has been muting there. Um if they're not speaking, they should be muting their um computers. Uh go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Member.
Um so thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, one of, so one of the arguments they had made in the, in the, in the rationale for the expansions, they, they, they grew, they would have the scale to be able to offer more um uh special education services. So presumably, if we were, if we were partnering with them, then that would no longer be a reason for them to need to expand. Um and so someone would, would think it would be in the best interest. Um and then I think, I, you know, I, I liked your uh analogy, Dr. Tutwiler, to, to being um, you know, on the same team uh wearing the Lynn jersey. And I think that would, would I think make us want to look into ways to make sure that the people on the team were being treated the same um in terms of who was involved in that classroom, in terms of the, you know, in terms of employment, things like that. And so that's maybe something uh else for the MOU or the MOA uh to, to address.
Um Dr. Tutwiler. Uh okay.
Feedback.
Member Castellanos.
Yeah, so I just have a quick uh question about uh so DESI, they, they plan on reaching back on May 1st to, to present either we can go with it or are they presenting, like what, what will they, what, what, May 1st, what will DESI present to us?
The, the, the ask of DESI was to uh identify any obstacles, legal uh or otherwise, regulation, what have you, um to this sort of partnership. Um in our conversation, um they said that um initially they couldn't think of any except for one, uh but they wanted to research it a little bit closer and that obstacle is on the charter school side and it has to do with um students who are not charter school students. and it has to do with um students who are not charter school students um benefiting from charter school dollars. Um which if you were using a classroom there, they're Lynn Public School students there, they are benefiting. Uh but I I, you know, it's I don't want to speak out of turn. They seemed really um excited about the idea and committed to seeing it happen. So what I'm expecting back from them is something in writing that says either can't do this and here are the reasons why, and then we'll have to go back to the drawing board, or you can do this and here is our syllable of uh approval.
I I appreciate that, Dr. Tuttwiler. Just one more question about um enrollment at Discovery Academy. Um what were the numbers like uh this next next this next go around for enrollment? Did we double? Uh let's get it double. Wish we doubled, but.
No, three hundred. They had a little more than three hundred uh applicants, they accepted them all. Um so at last, um it's, you know, April now, at last conversation with Chris Akarakides, the director there, uh that program was scheduled to be full next year.
Nice. Thank you. Number four.
Um Mr. Tuttwiler, when you first mentioned this to me, I considered it an unholy alliance. But I think that um, you know, it's a time to think out of the box and, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. And I, you know, I I think we we're gonna have to work more with each other as the circumstances we're faced with are gonna continue to present themselves. That's why I'm I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you.
And and just a note to that, we're we're facing some substantial, I'll go to Member Gately after I see her raising her hand.
Um we don't know what the future holds, uh we're bursting at the seams in all of these schools uh um on the on the modular side because of the uh what's happening. We haven't been allowed to keep the 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 money that we're anticipating to use for that will be still available in twenty-twenty-one fiscal twenty-twenty-one, which would not have been the case otherwise. So we are looking at that, but the reality of both the current crisis, uh crowding of schools and how that's going to play out in September, all of those issues around the table. So um I think you're right, number four, there's a um lot of um lot of issues we're gonna have to deal with and and think differently in a way we do things based on the current crisis and how we're gonna move forward and ensure that uh all students in Lynn get an education that they deserve. So uh no- nothing like this has happened in a hundred years and and a hundred years ago was not like it is today. So um it's um definitely different times and uh we're gonna have to be thinking collectively in a way to and working collectively and as 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 a team across the city to find ways to do what we need to do. So um uh we're gonna be thinking outside the box on a lot of things. Member Gately?
In Boston, they have the Boston School Department Charter School. Here we have KIP, which is a private school. And every, yeah, they need to come in front of Desi saying how inadequate we are and saying that we don't meet the students and and asking for all students to be placed into their schools. And every time they go over there, we lose money for students. And then they send them back and because they don't pay the media bills state and we get them back. So I don't know, I read from the community and I I saw that five students exist at KIP. They're special needs students and they have to meet their quota for special ed. And and am I correct that the teacher in at Lynn Tech is only five students with that one teacher and a para? That's what this says, one teacher has five students at Tech in the life skills program with a para.
Uh I'm sorry, I I missed that last part. Can you say that again?
It says on this paper that is um five students at KIP that need to have life skills or meet the criteria.
Correct.
And at Lynn Tech is five students.
I'm I'm sorry, I can't tell uh I can't tell. You can just keep your microphone on you when when Lorraine's talking, I think, well, yeah.
Oh.
Yep.
Can you hand me now?
Yep, that's better.
Okay. So that's why I'm confused, why would we want to take a teacher that's in in the in the classroom, in the kitchen or existing apartment that only has five, five to one plus an A, why would we do that to move them over to uh KIP and then move them back over to go to their classroom? That's the way this reads to me and they'll go from seven-thirty to three-forty-five, the teacher. I I just, you know, like I I'm it's very confusing on that. And I get very passionate about the way we've always like, you know, I'd like to have a collaboration, but in essence, because it's a private charter school, private, and it is not, it's a public charter school with private funding, that's what it is. And they do not have to follow the same rules that a public school district does. And that's where I get a little crazy about it because we could have that building over there in the Blood Building. We could have that if we could have just put in twenty-five years of materials. You know that there's different guidelines for them than there are for us. So I don't know how we're gonna form that collaboration and I don't know why a teacher that has five students and special needs over at Tech in the in the pre-existing apartment with a para would want to take on five more students from KIP. I'm like all confused by this, the way it was written, I don't know. I'm confused, can you clarify this?
Uh yeah, let me let me first say that um I I understand um you you know, the history, I'm I'm aware of um some of the things that people have been critical or concerned about with respect to this idea of counseling students out, um you know, being critical of the Lynn Public Schools. Um I I I I guess the um the idea of serving these students is more important to me than any historical um issues. Um I would like to keep Lynn's students in Lynn. If we don't do this and I can't find another viable option, these students will be outplaced and will likely be in Beverly. Uh and so that that's.
The men will be outsourced?
Our our students, we we won't have a classroom to put them in. Uh and so our only al- alternative is to find outplacements for them. And so, you know, to me, you know, o- okay, they were critical at one point in time. Um I I would say our relationship has evolved to a much more respectful place. Um and, you know, to the extent that, you know, I, you know, the 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 issues, the uh the conflict around funding and the, you know, the the different rules that they play on, I think that there is a place to have those conversations and to to engage in that uh fight. I don't want to do that on the backs of children. Uh that can happen in a different arena. In this arena, um the one that I'm proposing to you, the the idea here is to serve students in a classroom in the city of Lynn. It just so happens to be in a charter school. What you reference in Boston uh is something called in-district charters, uh those do exist. Um and they um essentially, um the teachers in those schools follow, have the protections of, my understanding anyway, have the protections of the teachers in the union in that particular municipality, um you know, sort of a different variety of charter school. Um I mean, all of those, I I I'm I'm not trying to marginalize the points that you raise at all. I'm I am razor-focused, laser-focused on meeting the needs of children. I I I don't want to engage in the political fights. Um I want to find a way to meet these kids' needs and I'd like to find a way to meet their needs in the city in which they live.
Okay.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Number Capola?
Um, okay. I I feel a little same as Lorraine does in um in how it's been for us here. And um we've had a long, long time. Uh even when my kids were in school, we were we were fighting with the teachers' union regards to um how we knew money was gonna leave us. And financially, they're still a drain on us. I understand about the space. But the part that I have concern about is, um number one, you always promised that we would know upfront when, you know, they they not hit us with this that we got the day before. So we get like a half a day to digest it and we're back to the old way of um not informing us up ahead and let us hear a plan and come up with options. But what concerns me in this is, number one, part of down the Y, it says effective life skills for reform at KIP that they want to benefit from the Lynn Public Schools. Well, if they want to recreate it at their charter school, the problem to me is that they don't have a teacher involved in it, they have a para involved in it. So if we get our space, um then, you know, uh we get our space, how do they, how are they going to um, you know, benefit from the experience if a teacher is involved and it's only a para to recreate what we have?
Uh I'm gonna let uh Ms. Jamerson is on the call uh or on our um go-to-meeting platform. I'm gonna let her speak to that, uh but I just want to quickly address the first part about uh the element of surprise. Uh I respectfully, um this is not a normal environment in which we are working right now. Um it is one where day to day for, you know, from sunup to sundown, we are hyper-focused on trying to meet families' needs and working really, really hard. We're on call after call after call after call, meeting after meeting, running around, trying to get things set set up and 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 ready for families. Uh I I I'll extend you an apology, uh a day in advance I didn't think was that much of a surprise, number one. And number two, I'm not asking for anybody to vote on anything, I'm asking for you to think about it. Uh and so um, you know, I I I I thought uh in my comments, uh I said pretty clearly that uh I am not looking for the committee to vote. The idea was to present the information to you formally, give you the opportunity to ask questions. You'll have, you know, at 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 least another week um to ask more questions, uh to do more research. I'll be doing the same, uh and then we'll come back together and and you can op- opine and and vote uh formally. Uh so respectfully, I I I don't accept the the idea that we've gone back to the days of old.
Okay, but respectfully too, Dr. Tuttwiler, we, you went and met with the the charter schools. I'm sure there were multiple re- meetings on that, separate sent out to the Desi people. We didn't need to get it yesterday, we could have been part of uh hearing what your thoughts were on it ahead of time. So, you know, and I understand the difficulty and what what we're all going through, but I I don't want to see us flip back to where we were before.
Uh I I submit to you that you will not. Uh I am committed to uh communicating with the the committee regularly. Uh there's been one meeting with KIP, uh and there was one phone call with Desi and both uh were within the 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 past eight days, so I just want to be clear about that.
Okay, and I just in regards to the uh modulars also, you know, I I heard it from somebody else today, but it was I hadn't heard it from the administration that that had all been um put aside. So I don't know how long we knew that, whether that is something new also, but I think we all in the committee should have known that piece through.
Oh, I'm I'm happy to speak to that, that's evolving over the last week or so. It's uh and I I I am uh have been involved in that and I'm on calls consistently from early in the morning till later at night, as you can see today. That was over the last week, the bid was ruled, um the lowest bid was ruled out, that was not acceptable. The numbers had been uh substantially above what we wanted to take a look at. So that is something that has, you know, happened over the last week or so. So again, if if it's something that we want to take a look at, what the committee uh didn't get a chance to talk about, I'll take that on um in terms of not bringing that up as it was happening. But there were so many things evolving that that uh that really take uh take control of the day. Uh that was something that we anticipated we were gonna be able to get done. Uh in the same in the same time, there was the the state is is allowing what's going on with legislation as well as Desi's direction in terms of extending out many things that are happening that we're not gonna be limited. Uh that's a financial side to it, so uh this isn't something that's been evolving for weeks. It's something that uh came up as the bids were added, the cost was um substantially higher, but just as importantly, the low bid was then thrown out. Uh and that was a decision that was made outside of our purview, based with our purchasing agent. So um I'll say all apologies to that information wasn't directly related to the members of the committee. But again, there there's so many things that are happening uh in this kind of unique time that uh that kind of take over the day. But that is uh and 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 to a follow-up on that, so you understand what's happening, based on that um uh inability to accept the low bid, the cost being substantially higher than the other bids, uh that bid was uh we gotta have thrown out, uh the money that will be continue to be available, that is gonna be rebid. And but the the timing will not be within the timeframe of the fall. And and indications are that may be able to get a lower price based on uh rebidding it at a time in the in the near future. So again, uh that's the information, it's not anything that I intended as I was being made aware of it to not make all of you aware of, but again, we're trying to work through what's unprecedented this period of time. So I just wanted to make that that point out, uh member Capola.
Thank you.
And if you and if you have another question, I'll have to follow up on that, I know you did, and we'll go to Members Tuttwiler.
I I think somebody was gonna answer one part of a question.
Wow, Ms. Jamerson? Yes, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Uh Ms. Jamerson, actually.
Yes, okay.
I do want to address um something that, um hi, this is Felicia. I wanted to address something that um um Gately said earlier about the five students. So it's it's not just five, we don't currently have five high school students at Tech that are gonna be moving over. What we have currently as a part of the eighth grade discovery is we have an eighth grade life skills class that has about eleven students. We have two life skill classes, high school life skill classes at Lynn English that are totally full to the capacity. And um none of those kids are graduating, so there're not there're no seniors in that class. None of those kids are leaving for next year. So we don't have the space to take all of those kids and put them all at Lynn English. We have to divide all of those kids into two additional classes to make that happen. So it's not that we're taking five kids and uprooting them from what they've currently had to move them to Tech. Um and the 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 shared responsibility of the program would be that we are using their building for space, we're putting our teacher in the program to teach because we want to ensure that it's our standards and we're we're teaching um our students the way that we want our students to be taught, because like someone mentioned earlier, they do have different standards than us and we just want to make sure that we are following what we need to follow. Um and there was another, there was another question that I think I need to answer, I don't remember what it was, I apologize.
Remember Capola, you want to follow up with that question or is it Member Gately?
Yeah, I think it was my question because I haven't had that answered yet. But um in the letter that we did get from Dr. Tuttwiler, it stated that um we would be putting a teacher and a para and they would put be putting a para. But the reason why this is such a good idea, besides the space, is that um the KIP wants to benefit from Lynn Public Schools' experience running a life skills program. But, you know, you're the person who's gonna see how you're running a life skills program is just a para. You know, how is how is KIP gonna benefit by that unless this becomes a permanent thing and we just keep expanding in their building, you know, class after class after class? You know, the old saying, the camel puts his nose under the tent and next thing, you know, he's in the tent and we'll have, you know, ten classes over there, twenty classes over there.
So so I can say that. So, so I can say that, um, the reason we said our teacher and their paras is like I just said, so we can ensure our standards. And I've taken a couple of visits to KIP and I've seen their, their programs that they have at KIP and they do have special education programs already existing in their schools, um, and they are trying to expand. And I know that their director of special education, um, the one in Lynn and the one in Boston are very actively involved and they are, they spend a lot of time in the classroom going in to work with, help support the teachers. So I know that they're, this classroom and these students will not be an island and that this, the KIP Institute will be able to learn from this experience.
Okay, thank you.
Member Sataway.
Thank you. Um, so, so Patrick, I, I, I can understand that, um, we have a space issue. And so if you're sitting and you're thinking, what can I do to bring to our students where they can have a school environment with the proper security measures in the city of Lynn and your choices are, are limited? So the fact that, um, you know, you sat down and you thought about this with the team of people uh, and you did at least some, uh, steps, uh, to see if it would work, um, i- i- is good. We have to think outside the box. We really do. It, it's, it's, when, when we, when we look at the CDC requirements, uh, uh, for reopening, uh, states and governments and they have them in phases, the first phase says, don't reopen, reopen schools because, you know, they don't wanna, uh, uh, a boatload of kids, you know, uh, together. Our, English is, is filled to the capacity. We have no additional classrooms. It's, it's gonna be a very challenging thing, uh, to, to even get to phase two where we're trying to still, uh, accomplish so, uh, uh, social distances. We just don't have the space. So it, it's important to look outside the box and to see where we can generate these spaces. While at the same time, um, like, like, I'm thinking like Jared, like a lawyer, uh, we, we wanna have legal terms in our, uh, uh, operating, the MOU. Uh, so it, it's, it's important to make sure that, uh, whomever's in that classroom and, and is, is, uh, educating the students, whether it's the para or a teacher from there is, is, is receiving fair compensation like our teachers would and, and, um, and, and at least have, have the background knowledge and experience that, that ours would as, as well because we don't wanna put the brunt of the work on, on our, our staff. So, um, I support the fact that you, you looked outside the box and I can't wait for you to get a response from, uh, the, uh, DSE on May 1st. Um, but those are some additional things that you should look into, Patrick, uh, just to make sure that, um, they know what our expectations are.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And again, I just wanna reiterate, uh, we have no idea what the fall's gonna look like. I know the governor closed schools till the end of the year. Uh, there's no way, there was no way that I was gonna be supporting opening the schools. If you've been to English with, you know, almost 2,000 kids in a school for 1,200 and you go around the city and you see the kind of space that's really, um, impacting us, uh, we're, we're having a meeting tomorrow with department heads. Uh, we can't even get really clear picture from the state right now, what, what we're even looking at for budget, looking into next year. Um, severe challenges on the budget side, uh, for us, uh, from the state. Uh, we depend on almost 70% of our revenue, including schools obviously from the state. Uh, and if this, um, you know, we, you know, we're up to, uh, as of tonight, 1393 cases in Lynn, uh, with 31 people passed away sadly. Uh, with continuing to see this grow, uh, in terms of our community as well as nationwide, it's not even clear what we're gonna be looking like in September and how we're gonna, uh, identify how we're gonna get, um, young people with 17,000 students in the city and education into schools. So, uh, um, anybody that knows me in terms of my com- complete concern on charter schools, my record in the legislature, I think was clear related to that. Uh, we've had meetings, um, while I've been there to clearly identify the challenges that I think both Member Gately and Capola have articulated. Uh, but I think this is a, this is a new world we're facing, uh, and we have to continue to stand for the things we believe in. But we also have to recognize that we're facing real challenges that are not gonna be easily, um, addressed without, uh, all of us uh, working together to find solutions to really complex problems that we're gonna face. Uh, the, the, you know, the easy part right now, not, not easy, but the, um, we don't have to be concerned about trying to get kids back in, into classrooms and making sure that they're all gonna be safe and that the teachers and the administrators will be safe, at least through June. Uh, but that's, uh, that's what we're gonna be thinking about as we talk about where are we in September? And that, that, uh, from everything I've seen and from all of us, if we're following this, uh, it's really not clear at all what this virus is gonna continue to do or where it's, where we're gonna be uh, in terms of making sure people are safe and healthy and that families and, and children in our community can, can know that they're gonna be safe and healthy. So, um, absolutely, these, uh, these are ea- are not easy questions to answer and there's gonna be, uh, things that we have to do together to get through it. And that's the, the only way that we're gonna do this as a community and as a country is by coming together and finding solutions together. I know we can do that. I know that we can get past this, but it's gonna take, uh, us working together to find those solutions and, uh, and coming up with the right ideas that we can find common ground on and move forward on. So, um, this is a really good discussion and I think it identifies that, uh, some of the things we've always talked about and, and fought for and worked towards are, are gonna be challenged in a way that's not, never been challenged before. But I, I know the people on this, uh, that are part of this Zoom, I know the members of the committee and administration who have that commitment to, uh, help us get to where we need to be together and we're gonna make that happen. So, uh, uh, there's some really good questions, really good, good discussion. Uh, those will just continue over the next months as we try and get to where we need to be. So just wanted to make that point and, uh, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's a discussion we're having today and we'll have a chance to hopefully at the next meeting, think about this and see if this is the right direction to go. But, um, it is gonna be, I think, looking at things differently is gonna be, uh, the new normal as we move forward. So is there any other questions related to this? Um, the life skills expansion, I think we can definitely hop into that discussion. We have a chance to like think through it a little bit more. Uh, think about the challenges and questions we have related to what I think's been articulated through this discussion. Uh, but if that's, uh, if there's no one else that at this point wants to reach, uh, kind of move, we can move forward to the next agenda item, which probably talks more clearly about what the updates related to the impact of the closure that we have now. And then, uh, that will definitely play into the kind of decisions we're, we're, we'll be making collectively looking towards September. So, um, if that's where we're at, I think we're ready to go on to the last agenda item. And I, I don't know if Dr. Tuttwiler, if you wanna, uh, weigh in.
Sure, sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yep.
Okay, good. Well, you, you don't have my face anymore. My phone died. Uh, but I, I called in from a landline. Uh, just quickly, um, much of what would normally be discussed in this space, uh, the updates around the coronavirus, uh, I've already discussed relative to, uh, our update on the remote learning plan. Uh, but I have some additional updates I'd like to share. Uh, first, I want, uh, the membership to know that we moved as quickly as we could after your, uh, vote to allow us to transfer funds from, uh, the personnel side to the non-personnel side. Uh, we've executed a purchase for, uh, 5,500 devices, uh, at, uh, $250 each. Um, we don't yet have a time horizon for delivery, but, uh, I wanted to let you know that we moved quickly on that, got an order in, uh, and we eagerly await, uh, the arrival of those additional devices. Uh, that aside, we've already begun distribution of the existing devices, uh, following the prioritized approach discussed at the last two previous, uh, meetings. Uh, by way of quick reminder, we're approaching the distribution of devices from the standpoint of equity and urgency. Urgency from the standpoint of accommodating seniors or other high school students who could not otherwise complete academic requirements without a device. Uh, equity from the standpoint of providing access to a device, uh, to those who would otherwise be unable to access the remote learning, uh, materials. Uh, this week, we distributed to the students who fell under the urgent descriptor. That is complete. Uh, and we're moving forward with those who would fall under the equity descriptor, uh, and intend to have that complete by next Friday. Uh, here, I'd like to point out, uh, that when I say those under the equity, um, descriptor, uh, I'm referring in large part to, uh, students on IEPs. Um, the Lynn Public School serves nearly 3,000 students on IEPs. Uh, every last one of those households was, uh, contacted by a special education liaison and, uh, they were asked if they needed a device. Uh, 300 indicated a need and we plan to hand those out next week. Um, if you tune into any local television station, the likelihood that you see a commercial about the census is high. Uh, I want the committee to know that we've not lost sight of that effort. Uh, as you imagine, might imagine, it's, it's much harder to execute the original plan under the current circumstances. Uh, we're trying to carefully parse out our communication to families, much as, uh, Member, um, Sataway said, uh, too much, uh, could result in folks tuning out, meaning too many all calls in addition to the outreach, um, from, uh, staff members. Uh, in partnership with Lynn Economic Opportunity, we're planning to distribute children's books at four elementary schools, serving low, the low confidence, uh, neighborhoods, those neighborhoods that, um, uh, the census folks have identified as, uh, neighborhoods where it is unlikely that, um, individuals in those communities, uh, will participate. Uh, the books are in English and in Spanish and provide information about the census and how it helps schools and communities. In the coming days, I will, I personally will also ramp up communication and social media posts on the topic. Uh, now that the governor has declared schools closed for the remainder of the school year, uh, we will add more shape to our plans to celebrate our graduates. Uh, I think Member Gately had referred to a conversation that we had earlier. Uh, one of the most challenging, uh, aspects of the extended closure has been the loss of, uh, this seminal celebration. Uh, because there's uncertainty as to when restrictions around group gatherings will lift, uh, the district is working on virtual celebrations for the short term, meaning a virtual celebration or gra- graduation to happen sometime in early June. Uh, and then we're planning, um, uh, in-person celebrations at a later date and one date that was tossed around for, for example, is the Saturday after Thanksgiving when many kids, uh, are, are back in town. Um, this is not a plan that, uh, I think it's appropriate to emanate from me, uh, for the, uh, from the deputy superintendents. We really want kids' voice, uh, on that plan. And so we've tasked, uh, the high school principals to work with their senior class officers, um, to develop a plan around, uh, the graduations. But, uh, know that, uh, the, the general, uh, shape of them is what I just described. Uh, also, uh, I want, uh, the school committee to know that, given that we are closed for the year, uh, and, uh, you know, again, there's uncertainty around, um, whether or not we will be able to convene, uh, or come together for programming in the summer. Um, we are beginning to think about a framework for remote learning over the course of the summer. Uh, and then we're planning, uh, we'll start, um, again, the, the, there's very little bandwidth right now. We've got everybody sort of going max capacity. Um, but we also wanna turn our attention, uh, to the fall. Uh, and I wanna put two things out there, uh, as food for thought. One, uh, is to develop, um, a, a flexible, uh, learning plan in the, the event that we're not allowed to return in full capacity, meaning, you know, in September, typically we start after Labor Day and I'm gonna speak to that in a moment. But, um, I, I don't know, uh, what the guidance is going to be around whether or not we're allowed to hold school as we typically do. Uh, and so we're starting to think about hatching foundational plans, um, to be prepared for that, whether it's, um, thinking about blended learning models, uh, or thinking about, um, different scheduling. We wanna start to assemble folks and build foundational plans for that. So when that guidance is released, um, we're not scrambling. Uh, the other thing that I would say, uh, is that our calendar currently has us starting the school year after Labor Day, that is, um, the 10th. Labor Day is a little bit late this year. Uh, it's the 10th of September. Uh, the governor, uh, has moved, uh, the marathon Monday, Patriots, uh, Day to the 14th. Uh, that will be a holiday. Uh, that, I think that, uh, formal news is forthcoming. Uh, and so we'd be looking at, uh, a late start and a, and a little bit of a rocky start, right? Uh, we're starting late and then we're gonna, we're gonna break for a holiday, short weeks. Um, I would really like to think about starting earlier, uh, before Labor Day in fact, um, to address the loss of learning, uh, that's happening now as we, you know, we're not engaged in the way that we normally would be. Um, and, and given, uh, the later holiday, the fact that there'll be a holiday on the 14th, uh, I would like to propose, um, i- i- an idea where we essentially ask teachers to come back on the 1st uh, and have students come back, uh, on the 2nd, uh, and, and get two days in and then break for a four-day weekend and then sort of establish some routines, get students settled, re-engaged early rather than waiting till the 10th of September. Um, this is, as, as you know, the calendar is, uh, an agreement between Lynn School Committee and Lynn Teachers' Union. It's actually in their contract. Uh, so we would have to proceed in the same way that we did with, with April vacation. But I'm planting the seed now that I think it would be prudent for us to think about, uh, starting early. And, uh, I've also, uh, come up with, I think, a better mechanism to get family feedback on that. And so what I'd like to do in the coming weeks, uh, certainly we're, we're hyper focused on launching the remote learning plan now, um, but I'd like to, um, engage more formally around that conversation, solicit feedback from our staff, uh, and our families, uh, and then come ready to ask for school committee support for, uh, potentially an earlier start. That's all I have.
Uh, I'll see, Member Nicholson, Member Gately. I, I'd like to make a couple of comments, uh, and then I'll go to both of you. Um, I'm glad you brought up the census, Dr. Tuttwiler. Um, the, uh, um, my understanding is, I talked to the Secretary of State this week. We're at about 43% compliance so far. It was, uh, uh, under 40% in terms of the online. So the, uh, I think there are census packets arriving this week. So I think if, uh, any of the members on the committee would, uh, we're, we're working on a press release and I'll be posting on both the city website and my social media, uh, highlighting this, how important the census is for representation and for federal dollars and, and how important that count is. So, uh, I think the schools are a great place and there's a number of other, um, partners that have been working on the census. So if everyone that does, uh, I know a lot of you do, uh, a lot of social media as we get that information out, it'd be great for you to highlight that and, and as people maybe have a little time at home or maybe they don't. But, uh, to make sure that they, uh, they either get online if they can or that they can fill out the, um, the, um, the written packages that, uh, I started arriving this week. I don't know if it's been in all of the zip codes, but I know that some were starting to arrive in the city and I'm not sure if, uh, people here have gotten those, uh, packages. Um, and in addition, so that's, I think, a really important message and we will continue to highlight that over the next few weeks and, and months. Uh, it would have been a different, um, campaign to, to get out and knock doors and, and do the kind of things we really needed to do, um, in a normal way, but that's obviously not the case. So it's gonna be up to us to really send the message in any way we can on social media and other. In addition, um, uh, the, uh, in partnership with the Lynn Community Health Center as well as North Shore Medical Center, has, um, is getting together care kits. Uh, we're looking at maybe 10,000 being available for the city of Lynn. Those would include masks, bars of soap, packets of solution to, to make hand sanitizer and pamphlets in multiple languages, uh, around healthy women living right now. So, uh, we're gonna be distributing those throughout the community, but the Lynn Public School, um, family and families, uh, would be where we're trying to get that and those, uh, packets out as well and probably through the grab and go. I'm just putting that out there. So the members are aware that that's been hap- over the last few days. This is something that, working in conjunction with, um, both, like I said, North Shore Medical Center, Lynn Community Health Center, making those available to us is, I think, a really important piece of what we're trying to do, uh, making people safe in our community. So those are a couple of things that, um, I think, uh, may not necessarily directly related to the schools, but, uh, in many ways is directly related to what's happening in the city of Lynn. So, um, I just wanted to put those two pieces out there. And I think Member Nicholson and, uh, was it Member Castellanos? Uh, uh, excuse me, Member Nicholson, Gately, then Castellanos had some comments. So Member Nicholson.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, for that update and thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, as well. Um, the, I mean, the first thing I just wanna say is that- the, I mean, the first thing I just wanna say is that I, I've just been really proud of what I've seen from the district and really from the city in, in, in the commitment to, to equity and all this, and as you, as we've seen the sort of the world as we know it, uh, change overnight and become a much more dangerous place, uh, just everyone just doing their best to make sure that no one gets up behind in that scenario. Um, from the, the, the frontline workers we have in the city, uh, and up and down the school department, uh, that are, that are trying to make things work. There's still a lot of gaps, obviously. Um, this is, this is, this is brand new, uh, and I know that people are trying to fill those gaps and uh, I know that I have been really, uh, I've been really appreciative of, of uh, the administration, the city's willingness to, to get feedback on those gaps and, and, and work to address them once we've raised them. So I encourage people to continue to reach out with where, where they see gaps, um, because uh, the, we will be responsive and I think we are being driven by that commitment not to let anybody uh, uh, fall behind. So the, the question I had, I talked to, I'm glad you, I'm glad you talked about the fall and, and same with the mayor too, because I think we, we know that this is gonna be a continued uh, risk, uh, and not only could it be, you know, the situation is uh, unclear for the, for the beginning of the fall, but it could change over time, right? If there's, if there's resurgences or, or things like that. And so um, one of the questions I had are, are there uh, other procurement uh, questions that we should be asking in terms of things that would help us uh, be open when we can in, in terms of supplies, thermometers, masks, things like that? Um, and then, you know, that's a longer-term uh, question, but just wanted to, to plant that seed. And then also, Dr. Tutwiler, you had mentioned that some of the systems uh, that would help us accomplish what we would ideally in terms of uh, the, the, the learning system and tracking competencies uh, would require an investment and, and looking into those as we think about a new, a new normal. Uh, particularly in the sense that I think we have an opportunity as the state and the federal government are thinking about what they need to be doing to help communities like ours uh, navigate this crisis. I mean, I know the, the state has spoken of their plans to, to talk to districts to try to survey what they think the needs are in their district. Um, so for us to be able to think about where, where our gaps are, where our students are missing technology, what, what technology we could use to better serve our students and make those asks proactively uh, through our state delegation, through our federal delegation, through the channels that are being opened to us by the, by DESI, uh, so that we can uh, sort of dictate what we think needs to happen for us to be able to, to uh, fulfill our mission.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll, uh, really good points. Um, I, I will just say quickly as it relates to uh, y- you know, if you follow the procurement laws, you're really not supposed to buy stuff for the ensuing school year until the new fiscal year starts. Um, and so I will tell you though, um, I, I, I know that Kathy McNulty uh, quickly moved to um, restock as much as she possibly could of the things that uh, we donated to um, to the emergency uh, effort uh, in the city. And so uh, at a minimum, like, you know, right now the schools are, you know, they have the supplies that they would have been using, uh, bringing to bear on their efforts for the remainder of the year and um, uh, in, in as much as it relates to safety uh, supplies that our nurses, potentially other people uh, would have available to them, she's already uh, working on replenishing that supply, which as you might imagine, is not a quick, um, it's not a quick situation, right? It, it, things like sanitizer take a, a while to come in. Uh, and we've talked about ordering masks and things, and things like that, 'cause you just don't know uh, what the requirements are going to be under an open situation. It may require masks, we don't know. Uh, and so we've started to uh, to, to work in that realm and uh, you know, you were sort of talking around this idea, but I mean, there is still the FY twenty-one budget that we have to contend with and uh, there are a lot, there's lots of uncertainty there. Um, uh, the last I heard, we'll know more in, in June. Um, I will, um, I'm planning to uh, present to uh, this group, uh, the SOA plan. I'm not sure you know, what's gonna happen with that, but uh, in any case, we've, we've got a thoughtful plan to address uh, our needs in the city of Lynn and the Lynn Public Schools and we'll, we'll, you know, share that with you and hopefully get your approval and we'll submit it on time. Uh, but there's, there, there's lots of questions in that realm. The only thing I, I, I'll say additionally, um, and then, and thank you for your comments, uh, with respect to um, the learning management system, that you alluded to that, uh, you know, we had a conversation earlier on in the meeting. Uh, I, I will say, having, having worked in a school that's gone one-to-one and brought um, the staff uh, and students into um, you know, use of a learning management system, that's really a year-long professional development endeavor, uh, to do it right. Uh, it involves first, all staff having a device, um, you know, the same device, and it also involves really targeted professional development. Um, so uh, I'm committed to moving the district in that direction. Uh, except, I mean, never more than now are we realizing, you know, how uh, helpful that would be in this situation. Um, but it takes time and I, I, I don't, I don't necessarily, y- you know, see, you know, us being ready in the fall uh, to launch something like that. There's just not the time or the bandwidth, there might not be the funds um, to, to do it right. And uh, I'm not gonna do it if it's not gonna, uh, be done right. We're gonna find another way to do something to serve needs. Um, and so uh, more to come on that, but um, uh, just know that uh, that is something that I see being of, of key value for us and uh, w- w- when the time is right and the funds are available, uh, that's a move that I would love for us to make.
Thank you. Member Gately?
Dr. Tutwiler, um, talking about the beginning of the school year, I had a conversation last night with a teacher. And um, conversation, she was just um, beside herself because uh, the teachers met on, on the Friday and the students stayed home and they didn't have a chance to clean out their rooms. You know, like the children didn't get a chance to take, you know, take things out of their desk. And um, she was wondering if we could actually have a, before we go back to school in September, um, to go to the old teacher for like, even if it's an hour to say goodbye, because a lot of the students aren't having the opportunity to say goodbye, but that's just food for thought. The other graduations I want you to keep in your mind because um, there's uh, seniors and there's eighth graders and the fifth graders. They're, they've all worked hard, so if we can get virtual um, graduations for them also. But if there's any way in the beginning of the school year, if we open on September first, that that September first day was that students would be able to meet with their former stu- teacher and say goodbye and wish them well as they're going ahead. That's all I had to say today, 'cause you brought up this segment. And if you're thinking out of the box, let's think broadly.
Thank you for that idea. And then I will tell you that we, um, if the scenar- if there was a scenario where we um, you know, were allowed to come back this year, we were already thinking, uh, number one, that we'd have teachers come back two days early to get ready, uh, you know what I mean? To, to get their classrooms ready, uh, get reoriented, you know, a, a just curriculum, to get ready for students uh, before they came back. I, I, I think what you propose is a really good idea, uh, and I think that would be a tasteful way to usher in the new year, which is to like, add some closure to the one that we just finished, which didn't finish in the way that we really wanted to, but like, you know, let's, let's, let's add some closure, let's say goodbye and uh, wish each other well going forward. I think that's a really tasteful um, way to start, so I, that's something we can look into.
Uh, um, Deputy Superintendent Rogero?
Yeah, I just wanna note though, um, that some students won't be able to see their current teacher, 'cause they may have moved to a different building or changed jobs, so we just need to also realize that not everybody will be able to do that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That's a good point. Uh, and I, also I should mention, uh, Member Gately mentioned uh, the middle school graduation. Uh, they were in the same conversation about the virtual gar- graduation and uh, we will certainly raise it with uh, the elementary principals about fifth grade. We, we wanna make sure that we're able to celebrate students in any way that we can.
Member Castellanos?
Uh, Patrick, thank you so much for the update. Um, so I'm really glad to see that we executed a, a purchase on five thousand tablets. Um, that's great to get those uh, those devices out to our students. Uh, I would like to see, if we reached out to, we have three thousand students on IEPs. Uh, we contacted allegedly all three, or just their parents, and we only had three hundred. I'd like to see that number grow, 'cause I feel like it maybe might be more students who are not being reached that can get more access to those type of devices. Um, in addition, I appreciate you bringing up the fall, um, also the blended learning module, um, that component, as you were, as we're, as, as we just learned that we will get five thousand tablets, um, maybe dual enrollment with uh, the community college in San Jose State would be an option to uh, i- if we do have to have a flexible learning plan to increase those opportunities with our seniors and juniors and have uh, our students kind of exposed to that opportunity while, as we're talking about, you know, we're gonna be having access to those type of devices um, to get, you know, to get that maybe, you know, put that in as a feature. Um, I know the colleges would be definitely open up, partner up for online learning, 'cause I, I, I'm very um, close with San Jose State and I see how they're adjusted. I'm on um, the strategic planning committee for San Jose State University, and that's some of the conversation higher ed's having, is to see how the, the incoming freshmen are coming in, just in case, like say, um, seniors going into freshman year, how will they adjust with their online platform, 'cause professors are doing it too. So it's interesting to see, maybe we could add that as a feature, so.
Indeed, indeed, that's good feedback. Thank you.
Any other uh, comments? I'd just like to, I've said it before, I just wanted, before we finish up, uh, you know, thank the members of the committee for your uh, ability to jump in here and uh, and then uh, we had said a year ago, we were gonna be having all our meetings on a Zoom uh, or go to meetings, and we would have been uh, wondering how that was gonna work, so you've all been great. Uh, the administrators, um, administration, the administrators, obviously the, the teachers and, and the families uh, for all of their um, support as we go through this, uh, and uh, like I said earlier, it's gonna be, it's a team effort as a community, so I wanna thank everyone that, you know, the, the parents that are home, uh, as uh, Member Gately said, trying to navigate working from home and getting their kids to uh, help them through the uh, the remote learning. Uh, everybody is pitching in as a community. Uh, and people have really stepped it up, uh, you know, school nurses who have pitched in to help us with our contact tracing over at the Marshall Middle School to keep track of all those positive cases and those that have been uh, exposed to them and, and making sure that we're trying to limit uh, what's happening in the city through that eff- effort. So everybody uh, has stepped up and that's what Lynn's all about, so uh, I just wanna thank everybody as we uh, as we as a community go through this um, challenging time together. So uh, you know, it's important to remember that we're in this together and I wanna thank everybody for all they're doing and, and the, the economic challenges that we all face uh, uh, together, uh, are gonna, uh, will continue. So uh, thanks again for all everyone here is doing and, and the work we will do together as we will move forward. Uh, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for uh, yes, Member Castellanos?
So, I have one, uh, we've had so many challenges going on. I would actually like to uh, do a quick plug for the Lynn Public Library. Uh, the Lynn Public Library is offering a, a community challenge where you're supposed to share a children's book uh, online and social media, and I would like to nominate Dr. Patrick Tutwiler, our Superintendent of Lynn Public Schools, to please read a children's book, share it on Facebook, share it on all your platforms. Um, the Lynn Public School Library Community Challenge of Lynn would love to hear your feedback, and that's my, uh, I'm calling you out, so.
Great challenge. Ch- challenge accepted, done. Wouldn't have to be a challenge, many of us accept as well, Brian. Yeah, there, uh, on, on that positive note, I'm um, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Brian, you're so red, by the way. Jeez.
Second. Second, Hall of Fame, say aye, oppose, no, the aye, seven. Thank you all very much. Have a good night, have a good night. Stay safe, stay healthy. Bye, guys.